Yep. Yeah, born ready.
All right, we're going to call this meeting. It's a Republican question. The United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I motion to approve a meeting agenda? Mr. Tate, Dr. Francis, in the conference room. All those in favor of approving a meeting agenda? Passes seven to the room. Mr. Tate absent. You, first order of business, leave for appropriation for that question. So down.
Well, before we get them so down, do you have a microphone of anyone?
Yes, she does.
Okay. As you all know, on November 15th, we discovered a major water break in the mechanical room at Greenwich High School. We had seven feet of water that had to be pumped out, and it was determined that the heat exchanger had failed on us. Other systems in that area sustained damage as well. The preliminary estimate amount for the interim is $217,000. Laura, you want to add anything?
Can I just ask, is any of that covered by insurance? That's not noted in here.
Twenty-five, they'll cover, we have a deductible of $35,000.
We have some of it.
Okay, Dr. Francis.
Can I again recommend that we somehow put that in here and give an explanation that we're asking for the interim because we want to start the work quickly, we don't want to wait for that money, but the anticipation is that it will be substantially covered by that. Because there are people who are going to look at this like I did when I looked at the First Coast Cobb, wanting, not realizing, thinking, wow, this is a big hit to the town, when in fact, really, we're going for the interim, as my understanding, so we can get work going, but that we're anticipating the insurance is going to cover the majority of this expense.
We were going to put that in before it got over to the VET.
But this is a public document that lots of people are going to see, and, you know, they're not going to necessarily stop and think it through.
We made an error on that, so we needed to add that. We just didn't have time to do it for tonight's meeting. That's our error, sorry.
Other comments or questions, Christine?
Is it possible for us to do a simple thing such as put a drain in the floor of a mechanical room? There is a drain. Could there be multiple drains? Could there be a water sensor? Could there be any enhancements in the future? Yes, we could.
We're looking at water, water sensors that will tie into the building management system.
But as far as putting a drain, we're so far below the surface that it wouldn't be effective, and we have a lot of groundwater that location.
Other questions or comments? Somebody want to make a motion to take this? Francis.
Hi. I move that we accept the interim appropriation for the Greenwich High School mechanical room renovation.
Second from this now. All right, all those in favor? Passes seven to the year. Thank you very much. All right, next up is the public hearing, so we're going to move on to the budget portion of the meeting. It's a public hearing. Comments? You get three minutes. There should be a sign up sheet outside that Erin is now getting, so if you're signed up, you're already there. If not, towards the end, I'll ask if there's anybody else. You line up on the side. Please respect the three minutes, otherwise we won't actually get to our discussion, which is something we'd like to do. And if somebody says something that you were going to say, you can just give them a need to and thank them, and try to not use all three minutes so that we can get through this tonight. Thank you. All right, so our first speaker is Maggie Bound, who will be followed by Susan Foster.
Hello and good evening. My name is Maggie Bound, and I'm the mother to five Greenwich High School students, past and present. They, as well as thousands of other children, have been beneficiaries of the award-winning music program at the high school. It substantially helped them differentiate themselves in their college applications where they continue their music at fine universities with excellent music entambles. Thanks to GHS, they have music in their lives forever. Tonight, I would like to speak to you about why and how we can approve the music at Greenwich High School. We would also like to ask your consideration of funds to purchase a new Steinway piano for the Performing Arts Center. It will make a profound difference to the third of Greenwich High School's students who participate in band, jazz band, theater, chorus, and orchestra, where the piano is at the core of the performing arts. Well, why does the piano need replacing? While in the '60s, Greenwich invested in Steinways throughout the district. The current Steinway Model D piano that's at the high school was intended for a much smaller space when the high school was at Town Hall with a 600-seat theater. Sixty years later, it's worn out. The keys often don't work, and they all are in lower ranges. The outer shell is scratched and gouged. The cost to fix the current piano is in the tens of thousands of dollars and would take many months. This piano actually limits the repertoire. In fact, did you know that Greenwich Symphony, when they perform at the Performing Arts Center, they take out the existing Steinway and they lease a new one when they perform? That's how bad it is. Quite frankly, it's like wearing a new dress with old fatter shoes. So how can we fix this? We need a new, larger Steinway Model D piano that's fit for the space, the new space. This new piano would last 60, 70 years and would benefit further generations of Greenwich High School students in the entire Greenwich community. It would actually attract world-class artists to perform in our space because the existing piano has been a limiting factor. Now the cost is substantial, $175,000. However, a group of parents through the ADA Keys Initiative has already raised $50,000 from parents in the community to show their commitment to purchase a new properly working concert piano. But we can't do it alone. Therefore, we are asking the Board of Ed to accept the gift contribution of the $50,000 that we've raised and add $125,000 to your capital budget to secure the acquisition of the new concert grand. The good news is, once you buy the concert grand, there are no license fees, no software upgrades, no additional equipment. So parents, students, and new piano are standing by. We have a proud tradition of public-private partnership in Greenwich schools, and we hope that you will continue this tradition and support this project. I have a lot more detailed information if anyone has more detailed questions. I also invite you to the Greenwich High School Holiday Concert Wednesday, December 19th at 7:00 PM. It's free, and the students are spectacular. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Susan Foster, followed by Gosa, I know Angela Smith's here.
Good evening. Thank you, Maureen. My name is Susan Foster. I live on Bramble Lane. I've lived there since 1990. My property, plus the fields at Eastern Middle School. So I have a, oops, a front row seat of the conditions of the fields and what happens. In a prior board meeting, board members discussed maintenance of the fields and perhaps your dissatisfaction at the level of the maintenance and the status of the fields. I couldn't agree more. Just this spring, the field was rented out on a Saturday, and it rained all day, and it got played on all day. And the fields then got delivered back to Eastern Middle School, totally damaged, and they're still in that damaged state. So my question to you as a board, I have no problems that you subcontract this out to the Parks and Rec Department to do this. I'm just curious what the governance is by the Board of Ed, over Parks and Rec, to ensure that school property doesn't get leased out and the return to the public school system in a damaged state. As a taxpayer, it really troubles me. So another field, which isn't under your jurisdiction, but the Coast Cobb Park, I walk there frequently, and there is a rule that spectators are not to be inside the fence, but they are inside the fence. It's a very expensive artificial turf field, and I believe you all are entertaining maybe artificial turf. They have to be maintained in a certain way, they have to be taken care of. There are not only spectators in there creating a potential liability issue for the town, but there are Gatorade bottles everywhere, there are goldfish being ground into the material, and there's never, I never ever see anyone there making sure that the proper play is going on on those fields. So I just bring that to your attention, and I just want to know, when the fields get returned to you after they've been leased out by Parks and Rec, are they told that's unacceptable? You know, and then maybe they shouldn't be getting leased out by Parks and Rec. I think it's your property and your responsibility to make sure that the fields don't get damaged. And so that's all I have to say to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is Gosa, followed by Karen Hirsch, and then Cricket Diamond.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Superintendent Mayo, members of the board, and Catherine. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Gosa. We feel it's imperative to be here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed budget of only 2.83% increase. We strongly support this because we are well aware significant cuts have already been made, and this directly impacts student outcomes and services. Greenwich Public Schools has demonstrated increased student achievement and growth. In order to sustain this and continue to be a district of innovation, sufficient funding is critically important. With the proposed status quo budget, we will struggle to maintain the trajectory of growth but can still ensure class size standards consistent with those in comparable district districts. We've spent the fall developing ways to attract new families to our district in lieu of considering private school options. We have an obligation to our community to be the best option educationally for our students, and we must prioritize this budget cycle to ensure we have the ability to continue to offer exceptional programs. In closing, we ask you to support the 2.83% proposed budget so we can continue to provide our students, our families, an educational excellence that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Karen Hirsch, followed by Cricket Diamond.
Good evening. I'm Karen Hirsch, President of PTA Council. Our intention was to stand in support of the budget as submitted. However, PTA leaders and members have expressed concern regarding the operating budget reduction options, and we now must implore the board to reject a proposed budget which includes any of these options, as each choice directly impacts our students' education and school experience. Should cuts be necessary, we ask that you direct the interim superintendent to find true efficiencies in the budget that will not impact the classrooms or our students, because even with reductions, the proposed budget barely supports keeping current programs and services level. Developing the best-prepared academically, technologically proficient, globally astute students is a monumental task. How do you propose to honor your commitment to the 9,000-plus students currently enrolled in our schools, to educate them to the highest levels of academic achievement, allow them to explore various interests, show mastery, and be prepared for jobs that do not yet exist by suggesting that we increase class sizes, change staffing models at the secondary schools, which could result in a reduction of course offerings, as well as deferring $1.5 million in new programs and initiatives? At a recent council workshop, a cabinet member said, "We can't seem to get out of our own way in order to make innovative changes." If we truly want to prepare our students for success in schoolwork and life, we must reinvent our teaching methods to help our students become globally prepared. Parents are concerned. They do not want class sizes increased, and they want to know, how do you expect all students to graduate with the increase in required credits if course offerings may be affected? As students are currently getting shut out of classes due to teachers reaching their contractual student maxima, how will you support things like the mastery-based progression if you remove digital tools which give educators options to see where students have deficits? How do you expect to see continuing improvement in student outcomes and district performance with a projected increase in enrollment of students with one or more high needs factors and with a budget that barely supports the current level of programs and services? We also find the suggestion to eliminate intramural sports untenable. Studies show participation in athletics helps to reduce stress, improve academic performance, and increase positive self-image, all of which tie in with the strategic plan. Intramurals give students a safe and monitored place to go after the school day ends, and they still have a guaranteed transportation home. It gives students, not only a team, that are not on teams, a chance to stay physically active, connect with educators, students in other grades, and the community overall, all of which are success metrics in the strategic plan. This budget is one of the tightest that we have seen, and we understand that resources and funds are not unlimited. Decisions made in coming weeks will have a lasting impact on our students that far exceeds the 2019-2020 year, and many of the returns on this investment will not be evident for several years. We put our faith in you to create a budget that truly meets the needs of our students in our district, to not simply cover core expenses like educators, materials, and building maintenance, but to take into account yearly cost of living increases and to remind Greenwich to invest in our students' future and to make education a priority. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Diamond, followed by Angela Morin Banano.
I'm Cricket Diamond, First VP of PTA Council at Greenwich. Council would like to thank interim superintendent Mayo and the administration for working to create the new streamlined budget format that has made it easier for council and parents alike to see the district's budget priorities. Council stands in support of the interim superintendent's fiscal year 2019-2020 capital budget as submitted and continues to support the 15-year master facility plan. It is necessary for the town to make a true financial commitment to support our school facilities so as to ensure our schools not only meet or exceed the most updated standards for student safety and security, ADA compliance, and 21st century ed specs, but can also adequately fit the ever-growing student population as our enrollment projections show continued growth. There are numerous studies that show that the educational facilities that surround our students are an integral factor in student success. Things such as natural light, air quality, and controlled temperature might seem like small factors, however, when added up, they can make all the difference in a student's ability to focus on a teacher as opposed to outside distractions. Student safety is also paramount, and council was happy to see that the interim superintendent's capital budget includes $34.6 million dedicated to major projects, including design studies for the renovation and expansion of three elementary schools, Riverside, Old Greenwich, and Julian Curtis, a design study for GHS's entryway, and ongoing school field improvements. It has long been observed that the town lacks an appropriate number of lighted and well-maintained regulation-sized fields for use by town residents, schools, and rec leagues. The master facility plan, along with the ongoing Central Middle School and the recently completed Cardinal Field feasibility studies, are a necessary part of good process that allows for transparency, comprehensive planning, and public input. Therefore, council supports continued funding for feasibility studies such as these. It is also important to continue the dialogue about school lunches, as it remains a priority of council to advocate for improved school nutrition standards, guidelines, and programs. It should be noted, the school lunch fund was not created to be a revenue generator but to ensure that all students have access to nutritious meals while in school, and we are pleased to hear
Thirty seconds.
That the Business Administration Department is committed to improving programs and our students' mealtime experience by providing a variety of appealing and nutritious foods so that our students can reach their maximum learning potential through healthy food choices. In closing, now is the time to invest in and move forward with updating all of our facilities. Parents and council support the master facilities plan. Please help us bring our schools into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Angela Morin Banano, followed by Allison Monig.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Superintendent Mayo, board members, cabinet members, and guests. Hello, I'm Anne Fetch, and this is Maureen Banano. We are the co-presidents of the GHS PTA. We stand here before you tonight to advocate for our schools and to ask you to do the same. Greenwich schools are some of the best in the country, and many families move here because of our schools. As a board, you have all spent countless hours working to improve our children's education, and we hope that as a board you will ask the VET to increase the funding for our school. The current proposed budget barely maintains current surfaces and leaves no room for innovation and growth. A 1% to 2% increase over the current year is not reasonable, as we all can see from the operating budget reductions options. Considering such a low increase, knowing contractual obligations account for 96% of the proposed budget increase does not make sense. We implore you to go to the VET and ask them to accept a budget above their guidelines. The budget, Mr. Mayor, proposed on November 9th. The current guidelines are not acceptable in a town that rides itself on its schools. Each year, the superintendent is asked to create a budget and then to make reductions to it by finding efficiencies. In the past, reductions have been made that seemingly do not impact the classroom, but they do. Cutting administrative staff does eventually affect the classroom, it's just harder to see. Now you are potentially asking for cuts which are going directly to impact the classroom and quality of education. An increase in class size always has an effect on students, especially in districts such as ours, where we already have 27 to 30 children in a classroom. Class size matters, especially in an environment of personalized learning. It's difficult for teachers to give students individual attention when a class size starts to exceed 20 students. And when an individual teacher has 120 students in multiple classes, it's nearly impossible for them to meet with students individually. In addition, we ask you to advocate for the 15-year master facilities plan. In towns such as Greenwich, we should all want to make a financial commitment to ensure that our schools are safe, secure, compliant, and in updated learning environments. We especially ask that you keep the Greenwich High School front entrance design fee of $75,000 in the proposed capital budget, as this project is vital to our students' safety and security. Now is the time to make an investment in the future of our schools. Thank you.
Next up is Allison Monig, followed, oh, I'm sorry, yes, Allison Monig, followed by Adilia Piazza.
Good evening. My name is Allison Monig, and I'm one of the co-presidents of the PTA here at North Street School. It's definitely a tough act to follow with Cricket and Karen going ahead, so I stand here in support of superintendent Mayo's budget with no further reductions as submitted. As Karen will be, support me too. We are against the class size, we are increased, we are against the removal of the Nusella analytics with educators. And also, as a parent of a middle school student, I am opposed to the removal of the intramural sports. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Adilia Piazza, followed by Tina Murphy.
Hi, my name is Adilia Piazza, and I'm co-president of the North Mayanis School PTA, speaking on behalf of the North Mayanis Executive Board. I have one daughter in third grade and one in sixth grade at Eastern. As someone who is actively involved at North Mayanis, I've been lucky enough to spend a lot of time with the amazing teachers, administrators, and families that make up our North Mayanis community. As a PTA president, I am proud to support my school and community and happily agree to speak on support of our superintendent's budget. But I do find it hard supporting a budget that basically covers just the annual wage increase while keeping the level of service almost the same. I was really hoping that we would have been offering our schools some relief, be it building repairs that can't wait till its turn and the proposed master facilities plan, or maybe provide some support to our teachers, students, and administrators with a mass specialist, a social worker, or expanding support for special ed. We have been operating in a holding pattern and a bare minimum for far too long, and decreasing services is only setting us back. We need to allow our superintendent to help move our schools and our students forward and advocate for our schools. A 2.83% budget increase does not do that, nor do the proposed budgets with smaller increases. On top of it, the district is asking more and more from our teachers with less and less support. We hope that the town of Greenwich takes this opportunity at the bare minimum, support the latest budget proposed by superintendent Mayo. But we hope that the town, the Board of Ed, or TM, VET, can do what's best for our children, teachers, schools, and community, and find the funding to support what our public schools really need, providing our educators with the tools that they, the tools to do what they do best, our children with the services that they need to learn, and the structural and emotional support for all of them to learn how to interact in the world we live. We need to be the models our children need.
Next up is Tina Murphy, followed by Karen Hirsch.
Good evening. I don't have the posse, but I am here supporting on behalf of Eastern Bedlam School PTA Executive Board. As I'm headwinding with everyone else, we understand that the operating budget put forth by our interim superintendent is a larger increase that would falls within the normal VET guidelines. And of course, we all understand that your role as Board of Ed members is to scrutinize that and to make sure that we are spending our money in the most efficient way possible. And most of this is just typical budget stuff that we go through every year, but I think we can all agree that these are not typical times in our district. Student enrollment has only increased at the high school and the middle schools, and this is especially true at EMS. Maintaining our staff and programs in this budget is critical to support our ever-growing population. Any further reduction to the proposed increases would have a damaging impact at our middle school, and really at all schools. A higher teacher-to-student ratio would have an incredibly negative impact on our students, and our classes are already jam-packed at Eastern Middle School. And history shows us that parents in this community do not support larger class sizes. A cut in intramural sports would also be harmful to students. Intramurals allow students to participate in physical activity and provides them with a safe place to go after school. Working parents rely on this option, and the ripple effect of removing such a program from our schools is likely far greater than anything that we could comprehend here tonight. Intramurals also give students the opportunity to develop interpersonal skills, learn about teamwork, develop friendships. This all helps students to bond with and engage in the community, and that's one of the traits that make Greenwich such an amazing place to educate kids. The district has so much to offer. We have wonderful schools, we have amazing teachers, and strong community programs, but we've had our, we have faced our fair share of challenges over the past few years. Between rumors of redistricting from years back to the recent charter change proposal, the more recent somewhat contentious town elections, we've all seen our fair share of unrest here. But the biggest challenge, the one that has threatened harmony of this district the most, is the revolving door of superintendents we've had in the past 10 years. We finally have an interim superintendent that knows this district inside and out, knows what we need, and knows the effects of programs, of what the effects would be of these programs being cut. He has put hard work, long hours, and creative thinking into these recommendations, and in these times, it is his best judgment we need to rely on. Any cuts to our programs will compromise the support we offer our students, and the quality of the education we offer will suffer. These impacts and of these cuts will be long-lasting, well beyond this current budget cycle. We recognize the hard job the Board of Ed has here. We ask you to support the proposed budget with no further reductions. It's what's in the best interest of our students, our schools, our facilities, and most importantly, our district overall. Thank you.
Next up, we're here in House, followed by Carol Simeon.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, members of the Board of Education, superintendent Mayo, members of Cabinet. I'm here to speak in support of the budget proposed by superintendent Mayo with the 2.83 increase over the prior year and no further reduction. I have a student in fifth grade at Old Greenwich School and a student in seventh grade at Eastern Middle School. I'm also the product of the Greenwich Public School System, having graduated from Greenwich High School. And I am concerned coming back here as a parent. In terms of the facilities plan, I saw four years ago the state of the athletic facilities at Greenwich High School and thought that even though money had been put in... at Greenwich High School and thought that even though money had been put in, there was not a lot that had changed in the last two, three decades. And so, I urge you to consider what needs to be done in order to support the master facilities plan going forward. With regard to the proposed options for the budget reductions, I could not voice more strongly my objections to these. There is no way that you can ensure the level of educational opportunities will be maintained in Greenwich if class sizes increase and staffing ratios change at the middle schools and the high schools. This can compromise course offerings for our middle school and high school students, making them choose between their interests and cutting off their trajectory in pursuing music, in pursuing a foreign language. Moreover, given the ambitious commitment that the district has made to the personalized learning initiatives and the strategic plan, those require teachers to focus on differences in what each student in their class need. We've made a commitment to this, and I don't understand how we can expect to deliver on that if teachers have more students in a class at the elementary school, or even in just their portfolio of students over all the classes they teach in the middle schools and high schools. So I ask that you figure out a way, and we will be your partners as parents, because we want to ensure the quality of Greenwich Public Schools to get the support we need
30 seconds.
to have the budget with a 2.83 increase. Thank you.
Next up is Carol Sutton, followed by Carol Sutton.
Good evening Chairman Bernstein and Board members, good evening interim Superintendent Mayo and Cabinet, and all the members of the community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent my posse, which is 900 teachers who are home doing their work and reading the budget book. As you know, the administration's operating budget came in at 2.83% over last year's and includes no fat and no rainy day fund. You instructed Mr. Mayo and his team to come back tonight with what the BET asked for, 2%, and they did just that. Regarding that proposal, I'm going to keep it simple. As Maureen said, class size matters. It is the major reason cited by families who choose private school over public school, in addition to all the things said so far this evening. Ask a teacher who's taught classes with 30 and classes with 20. Ask your sons and daughters who have been in classes of 30 and classes of 20, and they will all concur that class size matters. Middle school intramurals matter. The majority of students who participate in intramurals in middle school and in high school are those who lack consistent after-school supervision and activities and/or can't afford to pay for town league sports or athletic club memberships. Thus, a cut to that program, though not intentional, will punish our lowest-income students for the sake of saving $100,000 in a $164 million budget. Math and focus workbooks at the elementary level matter. In some buildings, teachers have been warned to limit photocopying due to cost, and we're only in the fourth month of school. I could go on based on the 84 questions that you asked the administration. Bottom line, all cuts hurt in ways that we can't even anticipate, which brings me once again to the question of why the Board places the BET's magic number above what the superintendent says is in the best interest of the district and in line with the district's vision and goals. Since the last meeting, I've learned a lot. I've learned that Boards of Education derive their authority from the state constitution and state statute. In effect, you are agents of the state, not the BET. And with all the talk of CAVE lately, I also explored the CAVE website and came upon the code of ethics for members of Boards of Education, and two bullets jumped out. Bullet, I will strive to help create public schools which meet the individual educational needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Second bullet, I will work unremittingly to help my community understand the importance of proper support for public education, whether it be in providing adequate finance, optimum facilities, staffing and resources, or better educational programs for children. Nowhere did it say that a Board of Education's job is to advocate for cuts based on the anticipated cuts of another elected board. It is not up to a Board of Education to decide what the town can afford. It is up to the Board to be sure that dollars are being wisely and justifiably spent to support the district's vision and goals. Example, if you believe that there is no merit to middle school intramurals, by all means, cut them for that reason alone. But if middle schools intramurals support the vision and the goals of this district, then it is unconscionable for you to eliminate them. GEA asks you to support the proposed operating budget with no additional cuts and the master facilities plan, and then go before the BET and make the argument that the budget is sound, reasonable, and in line with district's vision, goals, and best practices. In short, what is best for all students in this town. And then, after you've made your best argument, leave it to the other town boards to determine and prove that the town of Greenwich cannot afford the vision of its own Board of Ed. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Claire Colgallan. Has nobody signed up after that? If there are people who wish to address the Board on the budget, I'd ask that you line up against the wall, and then we'll have you come up after.
Well, that's a little hard to follow. Props. Claire Colgallan, New Lebanon School. Sat through a number of these meetings, and I just want to say, we're in a different place than we were the past few years with various different superintendents who aren't here anymore. You have a man here who knows this district, okay? He knows it. The budget he gave you is based upon his intimate knowledge of this system, okay? And so, we support his budget as proposed, and by the way, it's not a status quo budget. It's not a level services budget. Why? Because we have more students in number, and we have more students with need, therefore, it's not a level budget. It's actually a decrease. And the mind boggles that another body in this town can dictate to this body that a quote "1% to 2% increase" of a guideline is given when contractual obligations obliterate that number. It makes no sense. A further $1.343 million decrease as potentially proposed is not the path to pursue, and just for sake of numbers, that's roughly $149 per of the 9,000 students. And so essentially, if this budget is not taken as proposed, our town is saying, "Our children are not worth $149." That's what you're saying if you say Mr. Mayo's budget is not valid as proposed. And just to touch on what he was forced to provide you in terms of proposed cuts, to eliminate a teaming model that has been proven to drive success for our students, proven. Ask any middle school principal. So these cuts are not efficiencies. They are cuts. They're not efficiencies. Efficiency is something that, you know, you look at professional learning and training, and you say, "Hey, how many teachers attended that, and is the per cost per teacher, the ROI on that, of value? Or did five people show up and it cost us $500 per person, whereas if 50 people attended, it would have cost less per person?" That's efficiency. This is butchery. I support the budget, and our children are worth $149. Thank you.
So Mr. Zeller, come on down. If there's anybody else that wishes to address the Board, just stand up to the side.
Hello Board, Superintendent, Cabinet, and teachers, and ladies and gentlemen. I am Brian Zeller, the co-chair of the COSCOB School PTA, and those are some tough acts to follow indeed, so I just want to kind of reiterate what Karen with Cricket and Carol Sutton had to say in that COSCOB, you know, I speak to the Executive Board, that we do support the budget with none of the proposed operating budget reduction options, and we also ask that you support the 15-year master plan. And that's basically all I wanted to say, just for, you know, the sake of time and without sounding redundant. So thank you very much.
Anybody else that wishes to address the Board? Seeing done, we will move on to our next item, which is the actual budget report. All right, folks, here's how I plan to do this. Mr. Mayo, I believe, wants to make a statement, then I would like to focus on the draft operating reductions, and then go to the questions, one through the end, and then if there are other questions after that, we can take them up then. Does that make sense? Well, if people have additional questions related to this, we'll see where we go. That's how I'm running the meeting, Ms. Dayton. So we're going to start with Mr. Mayo. Yes, yes, Ms. Dayton.
Since the questions have been answered in writing, I think it would be a better use of this Board's time to bring new questions into the public domain instead of hashing over what's already been provided to us. Not a good use of our time.
You certainly can feel free to do that, but I know I have some comments on some of the responses, and there may be other Board members who do as well. So with that, Mr. Mayo.
Good evening, everyone. We began the budget development process in July with a pro forma budget, providing the program, services, and staffing we are providing today, which resulted in over a 3% increase due almost entirely to contractual obligations and additional 6.5 teachers based on projected increasing enrollment at the secondary level. Without any specific direction, we knew that 3% increase would not be acceptable, and worked over the next several months to reduce the budget, including a reduction of 5.2 full-time equivalents by almost $570,000. A 2.8% increase over the current year's budget without appreciably impacting the strategic plan and the continuous gains and achievement we have realized. My biggest concern with making any rash decisions with regard to further reductions of the budget is adversely impacting the achievement gains we have been making. As we finalized the proposed superintendent's budget, the BET issued their guidelines, and the Board of Education asked them to present further reductions of over $500,000 to get to a 2.5 increase and over $1.3 million to get to a 2% increase. Over the last three weeks, we have met with program and school leaders to identify and explore areas for further reduction. Some of the ideas generated by administrators met with no appreciable savings or efficiencies. Some of those examples are summer school, minimum number of students required to balance, extend a year of program, necessitates more space in one elementary school, late buses need more evidence to understand the level of use and impact. Some ideas require extensive study to determine if there would be a significant savings and to understand the level of impact reductions might have. Examples of those are professional learning, some of the consultants that we use, our network printers and copiers, paper and our copy use parameters, and the comprehensive program inventory and review of outcomes. To reduce a budget by 1.3 million, a budget which is almost entirely made up of salaries, the death-by-a-thousand-operating-expense-cut strategy was not going to be effective. We needed to identify staffing reductions. The reductions we have presented are not recommended, but they are the areas that we believe would have the least impact, and to be sure, there would be an impact. But they would have the least impact spread relatively evenly across all schools and grades until we have an opportunity to responsibly evaluate programs, services, and staffing for further substantive reductions without adversely impacting the strategic plan and the achievement gains we continue to make. Therefore, my proposal would be, if we must make further reductions to begin with the reduction in digital subscriptions at $106,000, which brings us to a 2.7 increase. Secondary school staffing ratios yields an additional $423,000 or a 2.5 increase. Middle school intramurals at an additional $100,000 brings us to a 2.3 increase. Increasing elementary class size guidelines by one student at each grade level in our school brings us to $720,000 or a 2% increase over the current year's budget, for a total of $2 million from the original pro forma budget that we began with in July. Part two to this proposal is my commitment to conduct a comprehensive program inventory and outcomes audit over the remainder of the school year to provide the Board a perspective of all programs and services we provide. This will be a high-level overview of our programs and services, the students, staff, costs, and outcomes associated with each program. From there, we will be able to identify programs and services that are yielding strong outcomes and may be worthy of additional resources, and/or programs and services that are not yielding the outcomes we expect for the investment made. These would be the areas we would focus on for efficiencies for the fiscal year '21. Thank you, Peter.
All right, so with that, why don't we turn our attention to the draft operating budget reductions options document. Do it. Peter.
I don't know where Ms. Dayton was going, but I think I'm going to wind up agreeing with her. I think we're going at this, I'm not sure.
Mr. Zeller, this is the way we're going, so if you'd like to actually make a comment on this, that's fine.
I am making a comment on it, so why don't you just hold on, Mr. W.
Well, you're talking about process. We already established that.
I think we're going about this at the wrong end of the stick. We are, we don't even have, as a group of people, a target. And now we're jumping into the weeds to talk about, we ought to know what it is as a Board that we're, this question has been asked over and over and over again. Mr. Mayo asked it to four members of the Board and the Budget Committee of the Board, what is the target? So I think we need, should settle on a target, and then try to talk about how do we get to that target? Where we are right now is, there's like 2.83 hanging out there, there's 2 hanging out there, there's 2.5 out there, and now we're going to jump around and talk about impacts to individual programs? I think question number one is, what target are we shooting for as a Board? And then let's try to work collaboratively to get to a budget proposal that works for us, that's one that we want to submit. To go through 80 pages and then ask the question after we've been through 80 pages seems to me not the best way to be spending our time.
Dr. Francis.
First, I'd actually really like the community, to thank the community for coming out. It's really wonderful to see the great support for our schools. You know, we join the Board because we care about education. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. But being logical about this, you know, you have to look and say, "We spend not $159 per student, we spend $14,000 and some per student, one of the highest numbers in this area." Well, if you look at, if you look at the numbers that were given to us in terms of this chart, so the way they set it up by state and how that comparison is made, so, you know, that's a thing that I looked at. If you look at class size, right, so this is a hard thing to swallow. We obviously don't want to do something that's going to impact the classroom. Sorry. But if you calculate out, which I did, and you look at a number of the local areas around here, we actually have smaller class size overall than comparative districts. So I'm not saying we want to agree to the things that are proposed, I'm not saying that I like a lot of these things that are proposed, and I'm not even suggesting that asking for what would it take to get to endpoint means we're going to do that. So I appreciate sort of the respectful manner that many people came up and discussed this with us, and I think you need to understand that we've got to figure out sort of where we're going to go from here, but we do need to try and look at these numbers, look at these issues, and figure out, to me, I actually don't sort of agree with the concept of, "We have a hard number." My feeling is, we need to see, okay, this is where we are, these are possibilities of how we get to another number, and are these acceptable or not? I think, to me, I was disappointed to see that these cuts really hit very close to the student in terms of classroom sizes, in terms of intramural sports. The middle school, to me, that's not acceptable. You know, I think some of these things are things we can think about, and some are ones that... that we can't, and I sort of feel like we need to go back a little bit and see if there's not some other places where we can make up some of this difference. So, I think it's something we need to go through as a process. I don't think I can come up with a hard number. I think I need to kind of work more with what are acceptable cuts and what aren't acceptable cuts. But I do think it's fantastic that we have a community that takes its time to come out and support us.
Ms. Stowe.
It's always hard to follow Gaetan. And she almost made me change what I was going to say, because you all of a sudden realize, first of all, I have three kids in the schools that were, by the way, crying when I left because they miss me. But, I... And I don't want to think we're taking our guidelines only from the BET. We're also all taxpayers. And so, at the end of the day, I think it's important for us to make sure our kids are being served well, but that also we're responding to our town overall. And I don't look at it as different factions at all. I really see us as one team, hopefully, the whole town as a team. And what Ralph has done so far is amazing, because this was the toughest 3.6% teacher contract increases, and you came back with a 2.83 starting point. So, you've already created, you know, a miracle, and I know we're asking you to go further. And I don't have a particular number in mind at all. I don't know if it's two and a half, I don't know if it's two. But I think it's our job to analyze everything that's in here, and a lot of these, yeah, they make me sick too, honestly, a lot of the things on this list. But some of them I think we could ask a few more questions about and get a little more data and see if they make sense. And I might even throw out a few other ideas. But, thank you so far for what you've done.
Ms. Dayton.
So, the superintendent presented two different proposals to us. I'm going to call them Proposal One and Proposal Two. Proposal One is the 2.5%. Proposal Two is the 2.0%. I can't support the 2.0% proposal at all, and I don't think through further discussion we'll get me on board for that. I think intramural sports are integral to the development of the psychology of the student as well as the physical capability of the student. I think it builds friendships, cuts down on bullying, helps social-emotional learning, gives kids a place to be that's safe after school if they are latchkey kids, so cannot support that in any way. Also, I do not want to touch elementary school class guidelines. That's a topic that this board, in my eight years, has been over many times. We've heard from the community many times. So, Proposal Number Two for me is a non-starter. I have further questions that I'd like to bring up, but I'd like to hear other colleagues before delving into specifics on the budget.
Ms. Raven.
So, since we're being chair of the Budget Finance Committee, we did meet about a week ago, and we tried to get a sense of where the cuts might possibly come, and I think we were pretty clear, we were trying to stay away from things that were as close to the student. I'm the one that asked the question about the secondary staffing, because I said students don't come in fractions, so I wanted to know what the impact was of rounding it up to a whole number. And as we look at how we compare to other districts, it's very favorable. So, like Jennifer, if I was going to accept a cut, I would accept the one where we changed the staffing ratios at the secondary schools, when I see the small impact it has in the overall number of teachers that we have in the district. I also think that we've worked really hard as a budget committee to try to stay connected. We had a sense back in September that we were looking at an increase of 1% to 2% above our current budget. So, to be at this 11th hour trying to scramble to figure out how we can do things differently, I find very disappointing, because a lot of us put in many hours to try to get to that. We're volunteers on the board, and we do... Most of us work full-time, so we care, and we want to get to the right place. And I just feel really compressed now, and I'm disappointed about it. I'm not saying that I don't want to get to 2.0, Jennifer, but I don't agree with the proposal that gets us to 2.0.
Ms. Wilson.
I always feel also quite disheartened sometimes when it comes to budget, especially the closer it is to the actual student, the deeper the cut. I think with the analogy, it's not efficiency, it's butchery. It does sort of... It does feel that way when I look at this, because I believe what we were originally asking to see is, where are the efficiencies? And this seemed to cut to the core, and I, you know, class size, intramural sports for a variety of reasons. I actually wasn't even thinking of the guaranteed transportation home that was brought up this evening, that's another necessity for a lot of our middle school students. So, I can't... I can't support the biggest cut here, because we're here for our... I mean, the reason we're all here, as Gaetan said, and I appreciate... I wasn't the emotional one this time, but I appreciate... I appreciate, it's true, we are here because we care, and we're here because this is for the students. That's the reason we're all sitting here, and that's the reason you're all here, and I appreciate you all being here and being so honest and open about it all. But I... To me, this is what's proposed, so I'm disappointed in where we found the cuts. I don't go 100% outside the box thinking...
Ms. O'Neil.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed that we're sitting here at this time, looking at these cuts, since we had signaled the administration early on through the Budget Committee and other ways that this was going to be a tough budget year, and that we shouldn't be looking for big increases. So, then to have the list that came to us originally, which rejected most of what was suggested, and now sitting here trying to figure out what to do and knowing there's only a limited amount of time, so, I can't support the intramural cut. Not... And I would need more data if anybody tried to convince me about... We'd want to know how many kids in each school are participating in what events, and are the same events offered in each middle school. Also, you'd want to know what are the numbers of kids competing on the competitive teams, and are the same competitive teams offered at each middle school? You'd want to know what other kinds of activities are available to students after school, because, you know, we talk a lot about kids being connected. Well, it's after-school activities that connect kids. So, that would be something that needs further investigation before I could be convinced that that's a good place to be. I also find it really hard to believe that there's absolutely, besides the transportation that was already done, any savings in summer school. It's a $1.2 million budget. That's not... All of that is not mandated. So, it seems to me that would be the place to cut rather than start cutting things that affect kids during the regular school year. The other thing I find absent in any suggestion for cuts is athletics. I don't think the athletics, besides the intramurals, I mean, the whole athletic thing, can be left out. If we're getting so close to the classroom and in the classroom in terms of cuts, I think we should be looking at athletic cuts as well. Not big, but I think everybody needs to feel the pain rather than just focusing on the classroom.
So, I'd like to weigh in as well. I was a little shocked and surprised to see the 2.0 proposal, to see reduction in elementary school class sizes. That is something that we've taken up time and time again, it's something we do by policy. To see it for the first time in this document is a little bit jarring. I guess that tells the BET that's what it takes to get to 1%, and I think I'm with everybody else, I'm not willing to go there. In terms of the other areas, this really is the antithesis of what we asked for. It really is. I think we were very specific in terms of there are a lot of other areas, programs that need to be looked at and evaluated. And I know we didn't have time for the deep-dive program evaluations this year, because it was focused on the redesign of the budget, but quite frankly, it's something that needs to be done. And if we don't come up with these cuts, if you don't recommend them, this board will be forced to, and if we don't do it, somebody else is going to do it. And I would rather we have control over that process than cede that to the BET or RTM. I think it's better from us. I don't know that 2.0 is a hard number for me, but I do know that we need to make every effort to get close to that.
All right. I'm trying to repeat the process. So, Mr. Sheller.
I agree with everything my colleagues have said, and I realize this is a hard conversation with the administration, who's, you know, been doing some work. Again, Ralph, I know you keep saying you own it, but you... And which I appreciate. But, you know, you kind of walked in midterm and caught what's called a mall street catching a falling knife. So, I appreciate, you know, it's like catching a problem as it already is in flight. But, I will say this, for the rest of the administrators, I too am disappointed looking at this, because this isn't what I had in mind. This is how I think about the budget, and this may help the conversation. I'm not willing to look at a budget that, quote, "impacts the classroom." That's off the table for me. So, impacting the classroom through changing elementary class size, I'm not voting for that. I would only consider changing any of the ratios at the next level, because the ratios really don't impact the class... They don't directly relate to the classroom, it's kind of like a generalized staffing model. But I would only consider that if it doesn't wind up cutting classes out of the catalog, okay? Or, I could maybe accept fewer sections, so it makes the scheduling a little more difficult, but I'm not interested in cutting offerings that are offered to students. So, those things are off the table for me. But the way to think about this budget is, it's a $164 million request. Okay? Just as a reminder, I don't know if everybody remembers this, GA represents all of our teachers. That's 854, 53 teachers. Okay? The salary expense for those people, okay, is 90... Somewhere around $97 million. Okay? So, that's the teachers. It's $97 million. So, it's a $164 million budget. You can do the math. That means, if you say, "I'm not touching teachers," okay, we've got $67 million to work with. So, if we can't figure out how to find, I don't know what the number is, 1.3 million, maybe half that, 2.5%, whatever it is, I think there's something wrong with what we're doing if we can't figure out how to find efficiencies in $67 million of spending. I don't know exactly where it is. I'm glad to, you know, take a day off work and sit in a room with a workshop with a bunch of people to do it, but I'd rather someone else smarter than me do that. I think we're also losing a little bit of perspective here, okay? The reason we're in this pickle, and I appreciate that the GA asked the question, what does the... Why does the BOE put the BET at the center? I don't put them at the center, but I do recognize that great schools that we have in Greenwich are paid for by taxpayers. And some of them are parents, like me, but there's an awful lot of them who are not. And they see a number... Our number, right by the way, that we're spending is north of $20,000 per student in public schools. So, I think it's legitimate when someone stares them in the face of, hey, a 3%, 4%, 5% tax increase. I think there are a lot of taxpayers in this town who want us to have richly-funded schools, but they're asking the question, why does that cost that amount of increase to their taxes? And the answer is, everyone keeps talking about this labor contract with GA. I just want to remind everybody what we voted for, okay? This year, per contract, teacher compensation, how much is paid for by the town of Greenwich, okay, is increasing... We talked about 3.8. It's not, because we're not talking about their healthcare that's paid for by the town. Every teacher in this town, on average, is getting a 4.7% increase in their total compensation paid for by the district. That's a lot of money, okay? So, we're... And if we say we want the teachers, and we want exactly the same number of teachers, which I am saying, and we have this contractual increase of almost 5%, I don't know a lot of people in the United States that are getting a 5% increase in their compensation this year, but our teachers are, okay? It's like they're up to, on average, $134,000 a teacher, when you put their salary and their paid-for healthcare together. It's a lot of money. So, I don't represent the teachers. They have a union to do that. My job is to represent the parents, students, and taxpayers. Okay? Fortunately, I care about the teachers, I want them to succeed, but my primary job is to represent those people. And my biggest fear, and by the way, this was communicated to the teacher union when this teacher was contracted, guys, there is a potential breaking point where the town says, enough, I can't handle an increase of almost 5% to your total compensation, and it'll impact teachers. Now, I'm going to fight every day on this board, not to impact teachers, but this is the reality. So, I think, and I agree with what Mr. Bernstein said, and this will be my last point, okay? The BET is not just giving us a 2% increase. Okay? That's false, okay? They have an $18.8 million healthcare bill for all of our employees that is increasing at 10% a year. Okay? It's totally out of control. Now, we don't talk about it in here, but it's the reason we're having this conversation. So, schools don't cost us $164 million. They cost us $183 million or more. It's just, parents don't understand all the budgeting gorp that goes on inside-town government. It's a lot of money to be spent. I don't like looking for efficiencies any more than the next guy. I thought we would be entering this and investing in new programs. Unfortunately, it's not affordable. The BET is our partner in this. I don't think they're out there as these mean villains trying to destroy Greenwich Public Schools. They're not. Some of them are actually ex-board members. I know all the people on my side of the aisle are very supportive of schools, but here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to submit a budget to them that winds up blowing up the town's budget, because we're the biggest piece of the town's budget, and then they turn around and just hand us a cut, okay? I want to be the person making those decisions, and I hope everybody else on this board and everybody else in the administration is the one making the decisions. We could play this game of, let's go send a budget way above guidelines. It'll make all the... It'll have the illusion to all these parents that we were these great advocates, and you know what'll happen after everybody leaves this room? Next May, they'll hand us a cut, and then we'll be figuring out what to do with it. Now, fortunately, we have enough time. We have till July 1 to figure out what to do with it. I'd rather do it now, but I'm okay if everybody wants to wait around until the June/March BET meeting, and I think it's the May RTM meeting, and we can deal with it then. I don't like playing politics with this, so I don't like that approach. I think we have to take an approach that's more likely to land on a budget number that is a good number to fund schools, and for 2018, 2019, one year, we're just going to need to make some hard decisions. We're going to need to defer consultants. We might need to cut back on summer school. We're going to need to maybe slow down on curriculum development. I'm sorry, I mean. Okay? There's just going to be some things that don't directly affect the classroom that are not going to be pleasant, but I'm not going to go in for this Armageddon approach of, let's go take the thing that's the most high-profile, cut it, wave it in front of people for political purposes. I just won't support that. End of my diatribe, folks.
Ms. Stowe.
It's a hard sermon to follow up with. So, can we go into this now, now that we've all given our... Okay. So, secondary school staffing model. Just a couple of questions. Like Gaetan, I looked at a few towns around the area, and, yeah, we're actually pretty... We could make a little move. Well, they're leaving, just what I was going to start really getting into. So, the class size, I think there could be a little room here, because Lauren, you pointed out, people don't come... Kids don't come in fractions, and if we went to... We rounded it up, for example, I know that everyone's most worried about the 27 to 30 students sections, and there's only one increase there. So, for example, you go from 44 in the current year to 45. So, that's the one that, like, hits, you know, hardest, because that's the biggest class, and you're only moving one. So, that... I can probably live with that, I'm going to be honest. Middle schools. Tell me about the teaming model here, because I know it's happening at Western, but I want to say it's only happening at Central in 6th grade and not happening in Eastern. Is that the right assessment?
Correct.
Okay. So, we could maybe also live with a little bit of a staffing change there. All right? Okay.
Without dramatic impact.
All right. Good point.
On the teaming, by the way, it's never come before the board for a vote. It was part of a monitoring report on middle school where the discussion was around how expensive... expensive it was to get to pure teaming. So we really had never made a decision that that was a direction we wanted to go in.
That's true.
Dr. Francis.
So pretty much agree. I do, again, having looked at the numbers, having looked at, you know, places that I think, you know, without as much pain could decrease, I think, of the staffing at the high school. I think the middle school, I was gonna ask one question, which is, is the class size felt to be a draw for the magnet component of Western?
Yes, and I wasn't sure because, you know, Western in terms of being a magnet, whether
that's an issue or not, and whether, you know, a half there or something would be something to consider, but I think that's a minor point. My sense is that with the apps, you know, we have increased both with the DreamBox and the, I think it's ST Math, those two, I feel like we have a lot of redundancy with that. It sounds like the, I mean, we have some data here saying that it seems like those cuts are really probably not gonna be so difficult because to me, I also think that's a reasonable place to go. It's classroom, but it's a place where we have so many options, I think there's ways to work around that, and I think I would consider that an efficiency. So that, again, I'm comfortable with. And I think I said before, I think the elementary school, unless someone could come back to me and prove to me that the interim rules really are not what we think they are, I don't think that's an acceptable place. I mean, my kids went to Western, I think for a lot of that population, I don't know as much about the other schools, but I have to believe it's important everywhere, but this is, you know, for health, for emotional well-being, for a place to be after school, for so many reasons, I think for that, that amount of money, I don't think that's a cut that makes sense. So I think someone else has mentioned, you know, maybe looking, you know, looking at other central office types of things, other, you know, developmental issues, other things that we're doing in terms of curriculum or professional learning or other pieces of that, might be things that we need to space out or pare down a bit, but I don't think we can, we can go to that second set of proposals.
Ms. Tate.
I hope you can alternate the direction of the questions flowing because we're always at the last.
I know. And make sure everybody gets a chance.
Okay. I can support proposal number one. I have some comments related to other comments of board members. I don't support cuts in athletics. My kids have been in sports all the way through the system, all the way up through the high school, and I assure you, the coaches are paying significant sums out of their own pockets every single season just to keep the sports going. I mean, they are to be lauded, I don't know how they do it, but it would not be functional without that. Don't see how we can run summer school if we are doing the Hillside project at the high school at the same time in which we have trucks taking soil out of that space. If that work is going to start soon, we should know about it and we should adjust our summer school plans to not have kids there. So that's number two. Number three, I'd like to find more cuts in a particular category. In curriculum and instruction consulting services for professional development, I have two very important questions that I need at a future time to get the dollars for. How much is budgeted for our consultant Moss and for our consultant White? And what was the beginning date of their consulting services? I know they've been in the district for several years, I'd like to know how long they've worked for us, and I don't know how long they've worked for us.
Okay.
So it's a two-pronged question. One is, how ingrained in the organization is the content they've delivered? And number two is, the kind of content they deliver, one relates to TEPEL, I believe, and one relates to the next generation science standards. I would prioritize other consulting services that we are contracting for over those two, and that's why I've chosen them.
Ms. Neil on there, Mr. Scher.
I want to follow up on the curriculum development, professional development. I have a question about that, about what we were spending and how many days we had to release time for curriculum and so on. And sort of the answer we got back was that, well, those programs are intermingled and it's hard to kind of distinguish one from the other, and I think we need to distinguish one from the other. The two of them serve different purposes. It's true, when you're doing curriculum development, you might also be professionally developed, but that's not the goal. So we need to run those two programs separately in order to be able to evaluate what's the value added from spending, those two budgets are quite large, and should they be that large? And have we any way of determining whether we are getting value back, not just anecdotally, but some data? So I really think those answers need to be clarified that I asked. We need more information about those programs because I don't believe that we've ever received a staff development, professional development report to the board at any time that just talked about that and what was going on in the goals and so on, nor have, I believe, we received an overall curriculum development report to the board. We hear program reports, but we don't get the general picture of what's happening in curriculum development, and we have not approved curriculum in a long, long time. So we're spending a lot of money writing curriculum, and I know we're tweaking it, but at some point, it needs to come to the board because if we're providing money in that budget line, then we need to know what we're giving money towards. As custodians of the town's taxes, we need to know that we're spending our money well, and we only know that when we have a well-developed plan in both curriculum development and professional development, and what we're spending and how we're spending it and how we're evaluating those programs.
Ms. Scher.
I just want to pile on, you know, as I said, you gotta find it in the $67 million, okay? One of the things in the real world that would happen is, we've all been in companies that get into tight times, you know what they turn around and say? Sorry, we're suspending employee training for this year. You know, you don't stop it, but you have to make some hard choices. And I'm not suggesting this, but I'm damn suggesting, you know, okay, what does it cost us to do professional development? What do these consultants have? Maybe we just, the hard choice is, which doesn't impact the classroom directly, by the way, I'm about to hear a big argument about how it'll impact the classroom, so we all hear about everything, but we already have pretty well-trained teachers, we have great teachers. If we didn't run all these professional services, Dave, by the way, PTA, hold up your hands, how many days you have to take care of your kid at home because we're doing professional development once a month, okay? That to me would be something that would make sense. Taking these consultants and taking curriculum development, if we have some curriculum we're supposed to develop next summer, okay, maybe we don't do the curriculum institute and we just push it out for a year. These are the hard choices we have to make, but these are the kind of choices we could make that don't have that immediate direct impact to students in a classroom.
So I just want to add a couple of things that items other people have mentioned and then bring up something different. So last year, we actually increased staffing at the high school because we had new students, and we were told at that time, and I know I've said this before on a broken record, but we were told at that time, we needed the teachers to add more core curriculum sections, and more English, more math, and the like. But one of those positions we use to fund an assistant dean, so when we're asked for more staff, somebody asked the direct question as to what that staff would be used for, and we were told we didn't know. Last year, we got a very, very direct answer, and then it turned out not to be the case. In terms of professional development, I know we use a lot of outsiders, but we have some great, amazing teachers and administrators, and I know we have some teacher and administrator-directed PD, maybe this is a year we focus on that and we just don't use outside consultants. I asked about conferences. There's not a dollar figure, and the answer is tied to, where are we sending people outside the district? I understand some of it is grant-funded, I'm talking about what is funded by our district budget? How much is that? Where are they going? How are we reaping the benefits? Because honestly, that's a, this year, maybe we don't go to a conference every year, maybe we go every other year, maybe we do one conference this year and another conference next year, but there's gotta be some balance. In terms of a different area, the only addition to this budget above the contractual was the $600,000, I believe, for special education out of district. So I don't know if we have an answer to this. I know last year, we were a million dollars over budget in that area because things changed, right, more. Things changed during the course of the year. Is this $600,000 because we know we have students that we are going to need to fund for, or is this, we're just trying to make sure that we have funding in place in case we have issues come up during the year? You were Laurie.
Both.
What do we know? Do we know $600,000 worth or do we know $300,000 worth? Because we can only really budget for what we know, as opposed to having an additional pot of money sitting around, because if we do need money during the course of the year and we aren't able to transfer, that's why we have an interim appropriation process, just like we did earlier tonight for the damage at the high school.
What we know is actual students, and also what we know is trends over the past certain number of years.
But for actual students, do we have a dollar figure? Is it 600,000, 300,000?
I can get to the dollar figure, I can get to the actual number for the kids I know today who will be there next year. What I don't know are kids who we will have to place because of whatever circumstances this year that would continue to next year, kids who will move into the district next year who come with out-of-district placements, and the other piece is the settlement cost, which is a trend on projection. So it's a combination of projections, trends, kids we know, kids we don't know but we anticipate.
Ms. Raven.
So I wanted to state publicly, because we did have our budget committee meeting, that we were thinking of these things, we weren't thinking of staff cuts, we were thinking about where we could find efficiencies in professional development, conferences, consultants. And Peter, you reminded me, and I was trying to think of this before, last year, we did add a staff secondary, and it was because of the staffing model, and we discussed as a group having a look at it, so, and that didn't happen.
Ms. Neil.
I wanted to talk about Windrose. I'd asked questions in the, about savings from Windrose, I asked about where Windrose would be next year, which has an impact on the budget, and there is no answer in the questions in that responses. There's no response to the question about staffing. So I wonder, it makes you wonder about the budget, how accurate the budget really reflects what's going on if we can have a program that we are moving, and we don't know the savings, we don't know where it's going, we don't know how it's gonna be staffed. It makes you wonder about so many other programs and how accurately the budgeting for them is.
Ms. Wilson, and welcome back to you, Ms. David.
I also think the risk is sounding redundant, and I also see that in terms of what's, in terms of, I know, we know that consultants can be very expensive, consultants, professional development, we have some undiscovered experts within the district, and I am of the mindset that that would be a place where, that would be a place where we can tap into our resources that are already here, be able to have experts train one or another within the district rather than spend a lot of money on professional development. I also, to circle back to what was mentioned earlier, I also think that finding, I guess it was already said, that finding efficiencies, I would not be okay, I think I said earlier, but I would not be okay at all with cutting maybe interim rural sports, and I also, in terms of the younger, the elementary schools, the ratio, and even a bit into the upper levels, that does not make sense to me. I'm losing my train of thoughts, I'm gonna pass it on.
Ms. Tate and Dr. Francis.
I just wanted to explain for the benefit of the public, give a little more flavor on the professional development reductions idea. It is a widely accepted practice throughout the private sector and the public sector to use a train-the-trainer model. That means you retain the same content, you provide the same learning, you give the same number of teachers development, but instead of having an expensive outsider who is a name brand, you develop a master teacher or someone in the district that then becomes the trainer, and the same content is delivered to the same audience. So again, the board is not proposing anything drastic, we're trying to think creatively about how to make reductions.
Dr. Francis.
First, a quick comment then a question. At the end of the secondary school staffing model change, it says we need to change the policy for this, I don't think that's true. Not for that, because the numbers, what we're talking about is not increasing the class size, and even if, right, even if you look at the procedure, it doesn't talk about that ratio anywhere in there, so I don't think we'd actually have to make a change from that perspective. The question I have, which I think I saw somewhere, but now, as we were talking about it, I'm not 100% sure, the extra, the increase in 600,000, is that an increase over what was spent last year for outplacement, or is it an increase over what was budgeted for last year? It's over budget? So it's over last year's budget, which is under what we actually spent? Correct.
So I want to ask you a different question. I actually was shocked to see that we have eight instructional coaches. We fought years ago to preserve four of them across the district, so the fact that we've increased that somehow is a little bit surprising to me. So I wanted to understand the impact if we actually lessen the number of instructional coaches. I think right now, it's two at the secondary level and six at elementary, what it would look like if we went down to three or four at the elementary. And by the way, instructional coaches for the folks in the audience are coaches for teachers, not coaches for students, they work with the teachers. Irene.
Just a reminder that we did reduce by three coaches back in 2014, 15, so that reduced our whole coaching cadre, which caused us to reorganize the use, and they are part of our train-the-trainer model. So we did go through a cut, a reduction of three instructional coaches then. They were content-based coaches, and we went from content to instructional.
Mr. Scher.
That's another one. Maybe coaching is a luxury we just can't afford this year. You know, that's something that, yes, do I want teachers coached? In my work life, I love having a mentor and a coach. It helps me a lot grow as a leader and so on and so forth. But at the end of the day, you know, maybe it's, unfortunately for right now, it's not affordable. The other one is, I want to come back to special education, okay? You take special education, just take it alone, it's $22 million. Okay, you add in, there's a bunch of other stuff that goes around special education. Every time you talk about special education, again, that conversation, that discussion about social work and psychologists and all these other people in the schools, assistant, principals in the elementary schools, dedicated. So the number's not just 22 million, it's actually a much bigger number, it's 28, 28 million or more. So here'd be the out-of-the-box thinking I would want to have, Ralph, that's $28 million for roughly 1,000 kids. So on top of everything we do, we spend an additional $28,000, if my math is right, per kid. 28 million divided by 1,000, am I right? It's 28 million, 28,000. Here's the thing that's always puzzled me about this, is, is there not any way we can get innovative on how we spend $28,000 a kid on top of the 20 that we're spending? So that means every special ed kid, we're spending almost $50,000, and we can't figure out how to get better and more efficient at the delivery of that? It just, it defies logic. So I don't want to cut these services, I'm just pointing out, if you're, if you're looking for any input from us on the places that I would want people to go look, instead of, you know, go cut on your rural sports, go cut athletics, go cut the classroom, I gotta imagine somewhere, because we're not looking for that much money, right? What do we look at? Let's just say we wanted to go the full amount, you're looking for 1.3 million and 164 million. You're looking for 1.3 million and $164 million. It's less than a percent. Seems to me somehow, we ought to be able to put Humpty Dumpty together and make this work, and still deliver the magnificent education that we deliver for kids in Greenwich already.
Ms. Tate.
So, to your comments, I think we are all in agreement that we should proceed with a special education review of best practices in other places, and perhaps some ideas will come from that. I would also be favorable to regional cooperation on the purchase of equipment within special education. There's no reason why each individual district has to go outsource, purchase, and distribute equipment. We can all cooperate if that saves money. I also proposed last year that for our 18- to 21-year-old population, that we try to get CES to run a joint program with Stanford or a neighboring city that would provide a base of employers, that would provide a good facility, exposure to higher education, socialization. CES came back with a proposal, but the proposal was just for Greenwich. So, we need to go back to CES and say, find out if there's interest from a neighboring district. Don't let Greenwich pay the cost of developing a new satellite. Let's talk about if there's interest first, and then see if there is cost savings in cooperating with another district on programming, facilities, and enrichment.
Dr. Francis.
So, we were talking about the 11th hour before. As I'm sitting here listening to all of our suggestions, I'm thinking, okay, we're not actually going to take out our pencils and rewrite the budget. Sort of what is, what do we think our next step is going to be? Because I'm a little nervous to be at the 20th and only then hearing what the suggestions are going to be. I hate to impose upon our budget committee again, but I don't know what our process is from here, because I don't, I don't know that we're going to, I don't think the expectation is that we're going to actually tonight come up with the dollars from the different places. And again, I would be worried on the 20th to then have to vote on something that I haven't really been able to see or discuss. So, what's our next step?
So, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at you for timing. When do you think you could have a set of proposals to us? Well, we have one before us, but I think the consensus is, that's not the right proposal. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to think about the timing and... Yeah, okay, we'll give him a few minutes to talk about the timing, and we'll go to Ms. Stone.
Just to add to all the things, Ralph, as you think about it, the other area that I would, professional development, I think that's sort of a, getting a sense of the board here that that's an area that we should look into. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty big number, so you could get a lot of it from it. So, that's number one. And the digital subscriptions. Sorry, some of those, fair enough. The newsela, that along with other ones, I'm wondering if we could look into, I have to say, as having three kids, I'm kind of amazed at how many different tools there are. I see one every now and again, and I don't see it for a year. I just think that if we could do some deep dive on all of the digital tools out there and all the systems we're using, I think we might find some things that are duplicative. And sort of the accelerated mat was one that came out of having now STA, ST, whatever it is, and the other one. I think it would be nice to just maybe get a huge list, and you might find some other efficiencies.
Ms. O'Neil.
I'm wondering if the administration has a sufficiently clear list of the things that we think they should look at, because really, the direction should come from us, and they should be responding to our direction. We shouldn't be responding to them. And so, I wonder if we want to see if we can come up with a list. I mean, the common one that seems to have come up is professional development, curriculum development, excuse me?
Conferences.
Conferences, out of, you know, travel. Okay, so, do other people, what else have we sort of agreed to?
I'll tell you what, I'll do that, Ms. Wilson. You can, yeah, go ahead.
Digital subscriptions, consulting, professional development, consultants, prescriptions. Can I jump in and ask one more question?
Yeah.
We talked about a program, program review, sort of just evaluate, Mr. Mayo talked about a program review, evaluate all of our programs. Do we have a, something we talked about a year ago, do we have a general timeline? Because I know one year ago, we sat and said, we want to take a look at these programs to make sure that the per people expenditure is, is actually effective and valuable, and we're getting our money's worth. Do we have, and I know you mentioned, Mr. Mayo, looking at a program review, is there across the board, is there some sort of timeline that we can?
We would begin the review immediately, but it's not going to be ready until, yeah, just till year '21, so, yeah. I have down, I'm sorry, I have down conferences, curriculum development, curriculum institute, professional learning, professional development, same thing, coaches, consultants, that's what I have.
And then it was the over-budget for the outplacement?
Mr. Scher.
Ralph, I'm not putting you in that box. Okay, what I'd like you to do is, and you asked, I forget who asked the question about the process, I think it was you, Dr. Frank, or Dr. Francis, sorry. Where I am, and I may be alone, is, as much as I'm irritated that we're in this place because we got to go give an additional $6,000 per, the town has to go cough up another six grand per teacher, I don't want to impact teachers. So, for me, that's off the table. And it, it, it's kind of an oxymoron, but I care about the kid, kids, that's first and foremost. I'll look at anything discretionary, because the rest of it, you know, something that's legal and so on and so forth, but I'll look at any proposal you want to come in with. Just connecting it to this question about the review, Ralph, I think we shouldn't look at this as, hey, just cut these little areas. I think we should be willing to put anything on the table to get to where we need to get to, whatever that means. I still don't think we have an answer to what target we're shooting at, but okay, fine. I'll look at anything, and I would consider anything you would say, that's a deferral for a year. Because the reality of it is, deferring things for a year, just things we've historically been doing, I'm not saying I don't want to continue to do them. I think what has to happen is, we have to create the time and space for you and your administrators to do the proper reviews of programs that, hey, should have been done by the last person. She didn't do it. Okay, fine, we are where we are. Now, you're going to need time to do that. And a lot of these things, we would talk about potentially putting in a hiatus. A year from now, we might permanently say, don't do them anymore, or they're so valuable, they would come back. I think we just need to recognize, this is, somebody said in the beginning, you know, we have somebody sitting in the chair at the moment that knows the district, super helpful in that conversation. This review of programs needs to properly happen. So, let's not get ourselves too wrapped around the axle and too excited about, we're jettisoning all this stuff. I think there's stuff that we should look at, we should just say, for this year, we're going to park it to save the money, but it doesn't mean after you don't properly do the review, then you're coming back with a budget that's based on a proper program review and what have you for 2021. So, I would look at anything that's in that 67 million that's other than teachers that I would, I keep referring to.
Ms. O'Neil.
I think trying to be more specific and more helpful to the administration in terms of being, giving them ideas, I think we need to find out more about winros. We don't know what it's going to cost, we don't know how it's going to be staffed, we don't know where it's going to be. So, that's kind of a great unknown that should be in that budget.
They didn't answer the question as to where it was going to be. It was asked.
The other thing, I think we should go back and look at summer school again. It's a non-mandated program. There's lots of things we put in there over the years. Do they all have to be put back in there again this year? A lot of it's not mandated. That would not, that would keep away from the classroom entirely.
Anybody else? I want to ask you about capital, because we, anything else on operating before we move to capital? We can always come back at the end. All right, on capital, we asked you to prioritize the items. The answer says, basically, we can't do it. You, at the last meeting, had said you would take a stab at that, so, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Peter. One of the things that we did, Lori, Dan, and I took a look at the capital budget, and we tried to prioritize based on an academic space upgrade, security upgrade, life and safety, ADA compliance, needs due for replacement, and risk mitigation. So, that's how we went about prioritizing the capital improvement plan. Our four top priorities are still the three elementary schools that are in the master facilities report, and the entranceway to Greenwich High School. We are, we're not taking Western, Western Middle School off the table, we're just, we're just not going to know what that number's going to be, even though our consultants have done the testing, they still have to submit to the DEP and, and get some answers on what their plan for us is going to be. So, we're going to take that off the table for now. We'll have to come back for an interim if we want to do Western, but it won't be next Central as well can also be deferred to a future year. And then we have Cardinal Stadium, which we definitely need to continue with the site design and look at bleachers for that site, because that's a definite safety concern for all of us. We'd also like to get that, have another way out of the high school, that design, so that design will help us, give us another way out of Greenwich High School besides Hillside Road. Having two ways in and out of that high school is not a great idea. So, then we looked at, yeah, not having, yes, yes, we need it, sorry. Our maintenance budget is something that we all agree upon, that we can't back off on at all. The $13.8 million that there for the maintenance budget is one of our highest priorities. We have to maintain our buildings, otherwise, we end up with Glendale School, we end up with Hamilton Avenue School, that complete rebuilds. We don't want to end up there. So, the $13.8, I believe, in maintenance is something that we believe we need to do, and we need to get it done over the summer. Let's see, and then there are other issues, other items in the capital budget that we talked about last time we met. Technology in terms of digital learning, improving and upgrading our network infrastructure, and our phone system upgrade, which I've been told that if we don't do a phone system upgrade, and they go down, we will not have phones at Greenwich High School. So, there's certain things that are in here that we need to do, and we need to do them every year, not just this year. And I'm afraid that if we put something off and don't do it this year, that we'll never get, be able to get it done.
So, I guess I'll ask you to formalize that list of priorities and share that with the board. Don't wait for the next meeting, and then we can post it as an interim. Ms. Tate.
So, I didn't have that information before the meeting. It was a long list, so you're going to have to be patient with me. The phone system, I will not vote for a new phone system unless it is a town-wide government phone system. There's no reason that shared services should mean that services move from town hall to the schools. It's a two-way street. This should be in the first selectman's budget, should be a town-wide phone system. Number two, Cardinal Stadium, I have a number of questions on that. Could the administration give us a rough sense of private donation capability in terms of a rough estimate, because that's going to be needed by the BET even to approve the project? It's not a nice-to-have, it's a must-have. I'd love to know if there will be public-private financing of that. Number two, will there be an overlap of the execution of Hillside Road and Cardinal Stadium? Will there be an overlap of time? Are we doing anything on the Hillside Road project, which is the fields of Greenwich High School, at the same time as Cardinal Stadium? No? Okay. And this is my main point on Cardinal Stadium. It looks like we may have to phase the project in order to get this through the BET. I don't understand why the Cardinal Stadium Committee decided against phasing. I think phasing would be good. I don't see why we have to appropriate the 20 million in one lump. I would rather phase it and have separate projects so we can get a piece through that's immediately something we can execute that will serve our constituents well, such as the structural elements that we already have in place that need to be replaced or upgraded. The ADA bathrooms would be number two. And I would defer relocation of the tennis courts, I would defer other buildings, I would defer the access road. I'd like to make forward momentum happen on Cardinal Stadium, and if you're asking for the full 20 million, I don't think we're going to get there.
So, I can answer the Cardinal Stadium question, because we just met on Friday. We asked the architects many of those same questions, and we have an end of board meeting, so I haven't been able to give an update. So, very briefly, yes, it can be phased, we've been asking about that for a while. They actually have a phasing plan working from the back forward. So, the next item actually is the bleachers, they are shored up, they are 1970, I'm 1970, and it's not a good vintage, folks. So, they need to be replaced. It would take a miracle to get all of the work and the funding in place for the summer. People are reaching out to the athletic sponsors to try to see what funding might be available, because we don't have presently money funded to do the technical work with a vendor to get the design done, to give a vendor, which hasn't obviously been selected, but a hypothetical vendor to actually have them buy supplies so that on July 1, we can grant the rest of a contract and have them build. So, I doubt we're going to be able to do anything for this summer, but I think the idea is to have enough money, hopefully, when this comes back to us, to finish the process of the design, the process of going to P&amp;Z and getting the necessary site plan approvals, and money to start the process of the bleachers. But it will be phased. It's going to have to be anyway, because you can't, putting in new bleachers would probably take, I think it's 12 to 16 weeks, and that means you'd have an issue running into the first couple of, the first couple of games of football, field hockey, soccer. So, you couldn't do all the work in one summer anyway.
I'll stop talking so others can speak, but quick follow-up. What does that mean ballpark in terms of dollars in this budget?
Don't know, but they're going to get figures to Lori before the 20th. I know, Barbara, were you wanting in on capital, or you?
No.
Okay. Dr. Francis, and then I'll come back.
So, one of my big concerns looking at this is that when we split out the security entrance for the high school, it doesn't look like we made a plan for the roughly 10% increase we're going to have in students at the high school over the next few years. So, what is the timing of when we think we're going to have a place for those students? Because I don't think we have enough room at the high school as it is to hit that max, which we're hitting in about 2022. It's not very far off from now. So, I was quite concerned. I was happy to hear, you know, we wanted to do an interim to get, you know, something faster for the security, but it now seems like the actual capacity issue has been lost. And, you know, that's a pretty accurate estimate. These are students we have in our middle schools that are going to be at the high school in a few years, and we're looking at, you know, what they gave us, 257 is the increase, but that might have been based on a projection for this year, but it's, it's still almost 200 students increase in the next few years at the high school. So, I'm quite concerned, yeah, I'm quite, I'm quite concerned that we don't seem to have a timeline for that. I think that should be on our priority list.
Super, Ms. Raven.
So this is an addition, and I'm trying to understand the answer to the question, so the gal that was advocating for the new Steinway in the Performing Arts Center, I feel that we should think about that with the fundraising that's already started. But the answer says the piano for the pack was considered in the budget build, and I guess that means the book, but it was to be added at the expense of the music operating budget, it was not included. The district music budget was not in position to provide the offset, as it was built to meet the needs of all schools pre-K to 12. I don't even understand that answer.
Mr. Scher. My understanding of that is, is that there's confusion between capital and operating, and normally, this is the way it's been explained to me, I have no idea whether it's correct, is that, you know, like violins we have in schools and what have you, that's treated as operating expense. So people, parents and what have you, they get confused when they hear operating and capital of what comes out of what budget. My understanding is from talking to the BET, I asked them, is this thing actually a capital item? And I don't know, the vice chair of the BET told me that somewhere in their book, it's capital assets are automatically things that are long life over 25,000, they are automatically capitalized. So they would never wind, something like this is that, right? So it would never wind up in the operating budget, it has to come out of capital. So I think there was some confusion in the finance team and our side about that, but I think that's what that's about. And I think parents became aware of it, and that's why they're probably speaking in that confusion. I wanted to go back, well, maybe since we're on this topic, I agree with you. I'm kind of in back to the old adage from 2009, shovel-ready, right? I'd like to see us make a capital budget for projects that are actually shovel-ready. I don't, this piano as an example to me is like, it's ready, it's ripe, you know what it is, you know you need it, you know it supports the program, it supports, I forget what their number is, there's like 30% of the kids in music programs, that's a pretty high number to me. It seems like, you know, we have some people who are desperate to give us some money, let's go take that off the table, that seems smart to me, but I don't know how somebody wants to deal with it procedurally. But coming back to this list, the thing I'm a little troubled with, with the capital list right now, is it feels more like, I appreciate that we have a wish list now. It feels like, almost like a wish list. It doesn't feel like, maybe I'm wrong, but I need to get comfortable with this, Ralph, that if the BET went and appropriated all this capital, could we actually consume it all and execute it all in 2019, 20? This seems like a really big list of projects to actually execute. I know we've been struggling, Dan's been clear on our capacity to execute projects. So I would want to get comfortable that the requests we're making, because by the way, this is going to happen anyway at the BET, I'd rather we do it. If that's our list, it should only be on the list, stuff that we can, money we can actually spend and complete the projects in the year that we're requesting them.
Ralph?
I think most of the major projects that we have, most of it's design.
Right.
The $13.8 in maintenance.
Right.
I would defer to Dan to add, answer that question, if we can get that done over a six-week period of time. I think Dan believes we can, but I'd let him answer that question.
But hold on a minute, here's my question, my question is, jumping up to 13 million is going to suck all the oxygen out of the room of the staff, so I'm not worried about that part, I think Dan is doing a great job. My question was, but in reality, all those other design projects have to be then also overseen by somebody, and we're talking about, well, we were talking about Cardinal Stadium, three elementary schools, all at the same time, is what we're really talking about in terms of design studies. So, and, you know, in our budget committee meeting the other day, we had this whole debate about, well, okay, normally those that might be handled by building committees, I think somebody jumped up and said, not so fast, you only do building committees if you're getting state reimbursement, and there may be none, which would mean all that would come to us directly, there wouldn't be building committees. So there's just, I have some open questions about, if we're not going for state reimbursement because there isn't money, right, you don't have a building committee to expand your capacity to manage these projects. So I guess I'm interested in, by the time you get around to giving us a whole, a complete list, I would want that question very clearly answered, that we have the capacity and we can in fact manage all of this.
Yeah, sure. Dan, do you want to grab the mic?
I just want to take a quick moment to respond to the comment about capital projects being completed in a year. That, that's really not typical, they will span beyond the end of a fiscal year, and then we end up with this carryover process. So we're not planning for projects with the intent of completing them in a fiscal year, we have design work that has to be done, the project will be completed, and the closeout maintenance, okay, I just didn't want, because I know there is the difference between, you know, the accrual-based budgeting and the cash-based budgeting, and we really need access to the funding in order to secure all of our contracts, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
The other thing is, some of the items in here aren't necessarily summer work jobs, you know, items like painting and flooring finishes, those we may do, vacation times, things like that, I mean, there's a significant amount of money in that as well. But also, some of the projects that we're looking at, like Lori said, it's stretched out over several years. So getting things, what we feel we can get done over the summer, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't put it forward. We're in the process of hiring a full-time project manager, we're down to the last two or three candidates. We have another consultant on hand, so basically I'm going to have an extra set of eyes, and if it's a large project, maybe we would go out and get another consultant. I'm not sure about the building committee, I don't know about reimbursement, that's something I wasn't aware of, as far as what we've put forward, I don't see any problem. Are we going to, are we going to be 100% complete? No. Like Lori said, it's going to stretch over a few years, but we have 20.
Ms. Tatum.
Dan, I just want to remind you how important I feel it is that we have some kind of specialized technology to track maintenance projects. Is there money in your maintenance category to cover the use of a tool for facilities?
Not at this time, no. You mean like a project management software?
Yes.
You may be aware that we're undergoing a capital budget process review with an external firm who has actually just finished conducting interviews with, with all the folks that were identified to be interviewed. And we, one of the scope items for them is to look at technologies, so we're certainly hoping to get some recommendations from them on what that might be. We don't know at this time whether we actually do in fact need to spend more money on those technologies, so we're interested in hearing more of what they have to say. If we can do it internally with existing resources, we would love to do that, too.
Ms. Stowe.
I'm keen, Dan, for that person to finally be hired, I know that we've been waiting a while. That is so key to helping you, to make sure that this all gets completed. Just generally, I think maintenance is really important, otherwise we end up with a Julian Curtis roof problem or a high school water issue. So I think that we want to always, you know, it's like our homes, we should maintain them, otherwise you're going to have to knock it down and rebuild it. So, you know, if you can handle it, I think it's great, let's keep our current buildings up to date.
Anything else on capital? Are there other items, or are there? Mr. Scher.
We're going to, we're going to get to the date, let's cover what else we will cover. We're giving it off as much as we can, and we'll deliver when we can, back to us.
Because I understand, I mean, Ralph, maybe you can help me understand this, I get confused, because I understand some list, some list of capital projects for us is already in the hands of the BET, is that a draft list that went to them? What do they have? They got apparently a couple days ago, a two-page document from us? What, yeah, no, but what was that?
Board docs. They received the CIP sheets, they're the scope sheets for all the projects that are in the list, and they're included in a packet, and then prioritization that Ralph was referring to, the prioritizations is on page, it's actually page 173 of the Q and A, I'm just referencing it because I know it's 200 pages.
That's, that's the thing I'm a little confused on, which is why I'm asking the question, Peter, is they're already sitting with a potential list from us, yes, because they got the CIP sheets, but at the, I understand, hold on a second, but at the same time, we're a little early in our process at a board level. So that's why I'm asking for a reconfirmation, not what you guys are doing, but how we're synchronizing with these other things in terms of their calendars, and the BET in terms of their calendar.
So nothing is final until we vote on it?
Right.
It's scheduled for December 20. Now, we have gone later on capital items before, but we're scheduled to vote on it December 20. The first electman has changed his capital process, which we obviously found out about via press release. We are actually meeting with him tomorrow to find, yeah, exactly, we are meeting with him tomorrow to find out how he envisions that process will run for the Board of Ed. We of course expect the parents to go out and support these things at the public hearing, but, but we need to find out what that process is before we can figure it out, so, Ralph, can I have anything to add to that?
No, we're going to try and figure out what the process is tomorrow, but I just wanted to, yeah, but I just want, I just want to let you know, Peter, you received all the information prior to the first, the BET didn't get, was the first electman that office received the information, not the BET.
And obviously, they're drafts until we vote on them, they're not, they're just pieces made for the point. Ms. Stowe.
Ralph, I won't be insulted, but do you, would it be helpful if we had a finance meeting, and I'm asking Lauren this question as well, in between now and the 20th, or you guys good to go?
Okay, so I believe then, Mr. Mayo, you said you could have new advanced proposed reductions to us by Friday, the 14th, adjusted for the conversation, is that, is that accurate?
That's correct, Peter.
Okay, so then our meeting would be on the 20th, yes, Ms. O'Neil.
I just wanted to go back to the question about having another budget or finance committee meeting, I just wonder if that would be of help to the administration to have them sort of as a sounding board before it comes back to the board? Time is compressed. They didn't listen the first time, you don't think they're going to listen the second time?
Maybe we'll let Mr. Mayo weigh in, I don't, do you feel like you need additional guidance? Between now and then, if you start developing a list, would you like to meet with the budget committee?
I think I received a great deal of guidance tonight, we have a number of things that we're going to look at, and I think we're good to go.
Okay, anything anybody else wants to cover tonight? All right, with that, Dr. Francis, oh, we don't want to break traditions, Dr. Francis?
I move to adjourn.
A second for Mr. Scher, all those in favor? Zero, we are adjourned, thank you very much.